May 2nd, 2016 work session of the Gaston County Board of Education. At this time, I would like our board to introduce themselves, starting from my far right.
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Chris Howes, South Point Township.
Mark Upchurch, Charitable Township.
Catherine Roberts, Dallas Township.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Kevin Collier, Riverbend Township.
Doc Cherry, At-Large Member.
Thank you, everyone. The next order of business on our list will be to adopt the agenda. This is an action item and I will need that in the form of a motion. Ms. Cherry?
Mr. Chair, I've moved the way adopt agenda as written.
Thank you. Mr. Collier has seconded it. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. How.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a discussion item, Mr. Chair, concerning these meetings. As I look at the agenda for tonight, it seems very scarce. I would even dare say that some of this stuff could have just been sent to us, like in the area of Title I grant application information. Teacher Appreciation Week is good, but some of this stuff is just information and it's there's no work to it. This board meeting, this particular night is supposed to be a work session. One of the things we talked about when we talked about doing individual instructional committee, operation committee, was that we would look at this meeting on a need-to-need basis to see if we needed to do it. So either we gotta get a little more functional with our committee meeting so that I know that there's not a there's a meeting next week after this one in between our other board meetings, so we'll get that information kind of going into a board meeting versus a work session. I'd just like to see us have a discussion, a healthy discussion, on how we take this meeting and either make it effective or nonexistent. I prefer to be existent, but I prefer it to be more effective and more working as it deals with budget items, other items such as that. So one I'd like to ask that we amend the agenda to add a discussion concerning this meeting and that sort of thing. Second thing I'd like to do is add a discussion item and a work session item as it pertains to this board's expectation or inspection of its expectation of our schools, all the way down the chain and what we expect. I've gotten a ton of emails and phone calls concerning different conduct of players, teachers, administrators, and I'm not necessarily here to talk about any one individual because I don't want to do that, but I do want to talk about what is our expectation of a board when it comes to some of the things that we're hearing. And I don't know if the rest of y'all are getting it or if it's just me, but from polling a couple of other people, they're getting it as well. And so how are we handling that and what are we doing with it? With that, I'm done.
Okay, so let me clarify. Do you want to add one thing or do you want to add the two things separate? And would you, the first one I've got is you want to ask the clarity of our work session versus our regular meeting. Is that correct?
I just want to have a healthy, I'm asking the amendment agenda to have a healthy discussion about our individual committee meetings versus our work session. If one's needed, not needed, if we need to reevaluate how we do that based on just what I see here tonight on the agenda and we're calling this a work session. Second thing I'd like to add is discussion about our expectation and the inspection of our expectation within our school system and the where we're at right now with with some of the things that we're getting emails on, not particular individuals, but just conduct itself. And I can clarify that more if you want to or we can wait to discuss.
No, 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 that's fine, that's fine. Okay, Dana, did you get enough of that to where you could add those two? Okay, we're gonna, we're, we have a motion to add these two items to our agenda. Is there any other discussion on these two items? I'll need, I'll need, excuse me, I'll need that in the form of, do I need a second on that one? I'll need a second on it before we have any discussion.
I'll second the motion then I have questions.
Okay, Mr. Collier, Mr. Collier has made the second. Okay, Kevin, discussion.
I'm not quite sure, the second point, that's a overall brush conduct and you're talking about athletes, teachers, people, students. Wow, I'm not quite sure what we're going to address, but if it's for discussion, I guess I'll be up for a discussion. And the next thing, Mr. Chair, is I'd recommend going ahead and putting this in front of the agenda here, I guess, item to A and B, if you will. Be my recommendation.
Okay, what I was going to, I was gonna add it below item seven before we went into closed session. Would you rather me to move it up to the top?
I'd rather go ahead and have the discussion. I mean, Mr. Howes seems to be ready to go.
Okay, that's fine, we'll add that.
If it pleases the board, I'd rather go ahead and.
It doesn't matter to me, that'll be fine. Dana, we're gonna add these items as two and three?
We've got to make a third.
I know, but I just wanted to clarify her when she, yeah. Okay, any other discussion on this? All in favor? And it is unanimous, okay? Then we have to go back to adopt the agenda. We haven't done that yet. We need, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other discussion on the agenda?
Well, I'll make another substitute motion to adopt our agenda as amended.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you, I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to the first of our two added items and I would recognize, Dana, would you read that back, please? The first one is the validity of our work sessions and our regular meeting.
Healthy discussion.
Yeah, okay. I would like to open that up for discussion. This is just a purely information and discussion item. Yes, Mr. How?
I'll go ahead and start it off since I brought it up, Mr. Chair and Board. The thing that concerns me is that we're calling this a Board of Education work session and we're the ninth largest unless something's changed and we went up or down. We're the ninth largest school district in the state and yet we can have a, I think our last work session was a 36-minute, I think I heard somebody say walking out the door, a 36-minute work session. I know we're doing individual committee meetings and those are good to an extent that four board members get to work on those committees and they get to get down into the weeds, but it doesn't help the other four board members and it doesn't help us to be cohesive, in my opinion, as a board as we're kind of discussing and working through some of these items. So if we're gonna keep the committee meetings, I'm okay with that, do what we gotta do. I just think if we're gonna call this a board work session, that we gotta be a productive board and work session. I think just to come in and hear, all these things on the agenda tonight are good, Title I grant application, Title II, those things are good informational items, but to me, they're not work session items. They're not getting down into the weeds to talk about, you know, anything the commissioners might have on the agenda. I know there was a meeting Friday, according to Mr. Booker's comments that we got on Friday, there was a meeting on Friday between yourself and the chairman of the commissioners. To me, that's a work session item. What did we discuss? What do we need to be on the, what needs to be on our radar in the future? What do we need to be looking at? Just from having a meeting with Mr. Keger, I know some of those things. I didn't have a meeting with him, I just happened to see him Sunday at lunch and he told me a little bit about the meeting. But to me, those are work session items. Our budget was another one as we worked on that. That's a, that's a huge work session items. If, if we don't need the work session, let's punt it. But if we're gonna have one, then I'm for working and that's just kind of where I'm at on that one particular item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. How. Any other discussion, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
I would also like to add, if we're going to look for items, items to add to a work session, Mr. Dedman and I had the great privilege to attend the National School Board Conference and certainly we brought back some information that we could share so that could be included in this type of environment as far as work sessions because when we go out and bring back ideas, it's good to share such ideas with the group. So I think that would be one thing that could be added as well, if we are looking for comprehensive, concrete information to add to the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Any other comments or statements? Yes, Ms. Roberts.
I have to say that my opinion of a work session is more of a sitting down at our table and really going deep into the things that we need to look at, like the joint meeting that's coming up. Yes, we do need all this information that's out here today, but I have to agree with Chris that I look at that as more as a regular board meeting and I'm looking at work session as we're actually working, really diving in and getting to the nitty gritty of things. So that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Cherry?
We've had this discussion before and we have bypassed meetings in the past because there wasn't anything that warranted, or I shouldn't say anything, there wasn't enough that warranted a work session. So there were times that we forewent them. And then we decided to have our two monthly meetings when they called them because if I recall, and please correct me if I'm wrong, of Mr. Howes' discussion that you wanted to have, if, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it could be, that you wanted to have the two monthly meetings. So I'm all for digging in if, if, if the time warrants it, but I don't want to have a meeting just to have a meeting, just to show up. I want to make it work everybody's while, whether it's a work session or a regular meeting. So, and I know there's always something to do. Our committee meetings are extremely effective. We get a lot done in the committee meetings. The other committee members are always welcome to come, just, you know, curriculum is always welcome to come to facilities and vice versa. I don't feel like I'm out of the loop, but that's my personal opinion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cherry. Any other comment? Yes, Mr. How?
You are correct. I did make that comment that I didn't want to meet to meet, to have two meetings a month. But also was the one that didn't want to have the committee meetings, I wanted the work session. And again, I don't want to beat a dead horse but labor the point, but one of the reasons is what we saw last month when we did our board meeting and we had the instructional committee brought the motion and a second for doing the tutoring at the end of the year for a couple of weeks and then doing the retesting. I had a lot of questions about that. I'm not a guy that likes to be blindsided by things that I'm not really sure about. I don't think the instructional committee should be blindsided if our operations committee decides that we want to spend $10 million on a piece of property. We're not, better clarify that. But if we did, I don't want to bring it from our committee to our, to the board and say, we want to spend $10 million on a piece of property and you have to think about it and it's just a matter of whoever comments before you vote. And those are some of the things that I'm talking about. I'm just, if I'm gonna serve on this board and not just serve South Point Township, but serve the community, like I believe that we all feel that we do, we have a title in front of our name, but it's a community effort. I don't want to be blindsided by things that I think we could discuss at a work session. So if it means having our committee meetings before the work session so that in the work session we get down in the weeds and keep from looking like we don't know what we're doing at a regular board meeting, I'm good with that. I just want to make sure we make it productive as possible so that we don't leave ourselves out on a limb and, and find ourselves not being informed of things. So I hope I clarified that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. How.
Mr. Chair, may I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Certainly, and I think Mrs. Cherry has already said it, we invite any board member to our curriculum and instructional meetings and we will have one on Monday and you're more than welcome to come and if you have questions, any board member, just email us or show up and certainly we have the professional staff there to answer any of the questions that you may have or raise. But let me just ask one thing regarding the agenda that we have tonight. Do we all know what's included in the application for Title I grant? Do we all know what's included in the application and what's been added to the Title II grant? Do we all know what's included in the ESL grant? And do we all know how important it is this week, on this day, to say that we recognize our teachers because today is the first day of National Teacher Appreciation? This is National Teacher Appreciation Week in, well, everywhere. So while we may not have everything on the agenda that we would want to see and certainly there are ways for inclusion, I do believe that when you look at a grant and the three grant applications that I see tonight, I'm not sure that I know everything that's included in the application and I want to know and I do believe that tonight affords us the opportunity to hear more about the grant and what's included and how they will affect learning, teacher in our classrooms and student learning. So I don't take any of the meetings that we have lightly. While I too believe that maybe we could dare cut down some of the meetings, I see the meeting tonight being a very worthy one, first and foremost, because it gives the board on this very first day of Teacher Appreciation Week, the opportunity to say, I thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Yes, Mr. Collier?
I just want to touch on one point Ms. Guthrie made. All board members are welcome, but the public and press are also welcome because they, these committee meetings are public meetings and we've had both press and public at some of our meetings in the past and operations meetings, but just want to remind everybody, they are public meetings and everyone is welcome to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Any, any other comments or discussion? Seeing no more comments or discussion, we'll move on to the next item and I think it was something along the word of discussing our policies. Mr. Help me, Mr. How?
Discussing what we, inspecting what we expect.
Expectations.
Of, of our system down line. Here's what I mean by that. I've gotten quite a few emails Friday concerning a situation that happened within our county. I'll just, I don't know how I talk about the situation without talking about the situation, so I'll refrain from identifying it. I think everybody on this board knows what I'm talking about. I got a call today from a city councilman about four or five complaints that he had concerning a middle school and a parent's, parents feeling towards that and they're wanting to take their kids out of the, out of the district. I deal with other students that are either I have direct contact with or parents that are telling me about an uptick and a rise in conduct of students in schools, whether it be dress code, whether it be their language, whether it be drugs on the premises or off premises. Of course, we don't handle off premises. There's been comments made to me from parents of teachers that are making inappropriate comments during, whether in their language or their comments themselves. And I think somewhere we gotta make sure that the standard we set is being carried down the line. And so I just want to make sure as a board that we have healthy conversations about that sometimes. If nothing else, to say, as a board, what can we do to help? I think that's important for us to do because the community is coming to us because they elect us and all of a sudden we become the, the greatest answer in the world, which sometimes I'm not and I get that. But at the same time, I want to make sure that we're also inspecting what we expect from the superintendent and the superintendent down through his cabinet, the cabinet down through the administrators, administrators down through the teachers, down through the students. Because I'm just seeing an uptick in a lot of, a lot of complaints and a lot of what to me, right now, seemed like some very valid complaints. I don't know what the rest of you are getting, but I'd just like to throw that on the board and have a work discussion about how do we do something with that? What do we do with that? And is there something as a board that we can do to support our superintendent or support the, the staff in this, in this room here or support the administrators or the schools?
Thank you, Mr. How. I would like to make a comment and I would like to recognize Mr. Booker at this time. I think I would like to recognize Mr. Booker and ask you a question and basically want you to give us some comments. Can you give us a general idea how it starts at a school far as a teacher having a problem, a parent having a problem, a child having a problem? Can you just kind of give us an overview? I think that would be a great place to start.
Okay, like Mr. How says, it's very difficult to talk about instances because you don't give specifics. But with any issue at a school, the first thing we do is make sure that we have spoken with the administration. That's what we charge those 55 individuals with, is running those schools. And we work closely with them, giving them support in running those schools, but we always, when a parent contacts me, first question is gonna be, have you spoken with the principal of your school? And you move from there about what the resolution was. And there's always more information to be gained when you do that. When you get into talking about our teachers, again, they're spaced at those schools and we rely on the administration and then we support them. It may go a number of different ways when you have an issue with a teacher. The critical thing is to remember, we are blessed to have leaders at our schools that care about the school they have, care about the folks they have working with them, and most of all, they care about educating children. I had one of our administrators today asking for me to come help him meet with a student to make sure that student understood how important it was to finish their academic career because he had noticed over the last four weeks, the child's attendance slipping and the fact that they were ranked in the top 10 of the class falling based on their participation. He said, I want them to understand how serious this is. Will you come meet with me? So we have that level of care going on in our schools and I'm very proud of what those folks do. I think anytime we get an instance of events that happen, you all saw this with one that occurred two weeks ago, it was around the school, it wasn't at the school. We are part of this community. I've said that since I became superintendent. Our community will only be as strong as our schools, but we will only be as strong as our community and we all have to work together to make this community better. So I hope I'm touching on what you were asking.
Yes, sir, that, that gives us a great, great view of, kind of a big broad view of what I think Mr. How was trying to address. Mr. Collier?
I just have a comment. Some of the things are, and I'm not trying to downplay anything that's out there, but some things are just mere rumors out there. And social media is great, but it's also harmful. And I had some parents coming unglued and talking to me about some things they were seeing on social media. And, and as I dug into it, it was a police issue in the end that didn't happen at one of our schools and we wait to hear, take our lead from the police. And, and there was, the police were having a hard time to validate the, the claims that were being made. And so social media puts that out there like it's the truth and contacts the news and everybody else and it just takes on this whole life and, and parents in my community over this one are just, just coming unglued because of what they're reading. And, and it's hard to sit and say as a board member that, you know, I don't know if it's true or not because in their mind it's true because it was on social media, if you know what I'm saying. They take it for the truth until proven otherwise. So this day and time, parents seem to get, and I love that they're passionate. Number one, I, I'm thankful that parents are that passionate. Number one, I'm thankful that parents are that passionate and that concerned about kids and that our school, they didn't think was doing enough at this point. But it's really hard for the professionals and the police to validate things when some things are just, I don't know what else to call them, nothing more than an exaggerated story. And we don't have the whole story, but it kind of takes its own life. So there's always those things. And then some instances that happen in classrooms, you know, sometimes a teacher makes a bad decision. Sometimes a student tells something that just isn't true. So it's a tough balancing act, and I'm not sure how we police rumors, but I sure hope if we find out anything that's true, that everything that Mr. Booker said takes place, that we can't act fast enough.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Ms. Roberts?
I have a question. Mr. Howell, I'm getting from you that maybe you're asking about accountability, maybe? Is that a good word to use?
Yes and no. I'm asking about, we only have one person accountable to us, and he's sitting in between us, and I think he does a very good job of that. I'm asking as a board, what can we do to help in what we hear? Because, I mean, Kevin, I understand what you're saying. If it's not on Facebook, it's not true. I get that. Or if it's not in one of our local papers, it's not true. But a lot of what I'm getting is not Facebook media, because I understand how that goes. I'm getting personal phone calls, I'm getting students that are sitting in a classroom. And I'm not saying any one particular teacher. Teachers are allowed to have a bad day just like I am, and trust me, I have plenty of them. Administrators are allowed to have a bad day just like I am. I'm just seeing an uptick more in the last two months, and maybe it's just the end of school, and it's been a rough year, I don't know. But I'm seeing more of an uptick in that. And so as a board member, I feel like I have an accountability to the community to inspect what I expect. And I expect an excellent superintendent, and I think we have one. I expect an excellent cabinet, I think we have one. I expect excellent schools, I think we're getting there. My question is, what can we do as a board to help facilitate that? And maybe I'm the only one hearing it. If I'm the only one hearing it, then it is what it is. But I'm just, I think part of that is what we do, is we're the voice back to the community to say, "Hey, we hear what you're saying. You know, we're trying to make sure that we provide the, we want to be number one school system in the state. How do we do that if we're not engaged into every aspect of education?" Not micromanagers, I hate micromanagers. This has nothing to do with micromanaging. It's everything to do with leadership and how do we help.
Well, that's why I brought up the word accountability, because what I'm getting out of it is, in my opinion of it is, we have a lot of great employees, but we employ humans, and we all screw up at some point. And when that happens, we, in my opinion, we have to make sure they're held accountable, whether it's employees or students. And I made the comment to someone up here a couple of weeks ago, I remember this time of year last year, it just seems like more chaos goes on right now in schools, in our offices, everywhere. But I'm getting from that accountability, which I'm all for when we've looked at the whole problem and see the true issue.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Any other comments? Mr. Dedman?
I've also received a couple complaints, as Mr. Howell has, and I don't know about the rest of you, but what I normally do is I call the superintendent, and the superintendent researches it and gets back with me, which I really appreciate. If I feel like it's a need for the whole board to see, I would send it to Mr. Lutz. But, you know, I do have people. I will remind everybody, we have 34,000 students, okay? That's a lot of students, and we have 4,000 teachers. And the majority, as Catherine just said, they do a wonderful job. I've been visiting some of our schools, our principals are so concerned about the safety of kids. You know, stuff happens. I mean, it's just the way it does. So we need to remember that we also have so many good things that happen in our school system. But I have received some of the same complaints as Mr. Howell, so just wanted you to know. He's not the only one that gets them. I don't get as many as he does because I don't do the social network stuff like he does. Or social media. I hear you. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Ms. Cherry?
Just real quickly, I received the same calls too. And the councilman, I asked him one quick question because I'm real big about protocol. And the first thing I asked him was, "Did these people talk to the administrator?" And he told me no. So I asked him very nicely, "Would you please do me a favor? Would you have them go see the administrator? And then if they feel like they have gotten the problem resolved, that's great. If not, call me back." And then I called Mr. Booker because at least give the administrator a chance to take care of the problem. So I thought that was interesting.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
I did the same thing, Ms. Cherry, and asked if that person, and I'm just a little baffled why a councilman would call three different school board members like it was a big deal. I mean, you know, and the first thing I asked that person to tell me is, "Have those parents call me. I'd love to hear from those parents." So makes me wonder, Mr. Howell.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Collier?
First, I'd like to echo what Ms. Roberts and Mr. Howell said. There does seem to be an uptick. My concern is, a lot of this uptick too are things that happen away from our schools. But as Mr. Booker said, it is our community. And the gray area for me is, how does the school respond or should they respond? What is their response, if any, if it's something that's happened off, away from our schools? And I guess it depends if it's a student or if it's a teacher. And it's just a big gray area to me about what our role is, how we're supposed to respond to things that happen off campus. And I don't know if there's any clear guidelines, and maybe that's what you're looking for, Mr. Howell.
Yes, Mr. Howell?
If I may. There is a little bit of grayness there, but there's a little bit of grayness too in what our part is. And so I get that as well. I just, I like to be transparent. I think this board should be transparent. I don't think we should say we're the ninth largest school district and we have zero problems. And I don't think anybody said that, but sometimes we try to, we try to mask the picture to make it, the car look really good when underneath the paint's got a little bit of rust. All I'm saying is, to be the best, we got to be able to recognize those issues, give the support to the superintendent that he needs to get through them, provide whatever assistance we can, whether it's, you know, I agree with Mr. Dedman and Ms. Cherry, that I had a parent call me and they were irate about a situation. I said, "Hey, have you gone to talk to the administrator? Please go do that before you come to the central office." The next day, they text me back, said, "The administrator was wonderful." It nipped it in the bud right there. I'm not, again, I'm not trying to micromanage, but I'm trying to be transparent and not pretend that we don't have some of these issues going on, because we all know they're there. So what can we do to help fix it? And that's, you know, I want to help lead through trying to fix it and not just pretend that doesn't exist or try to take care of it on the backside, because that doesn't tell our community that we care about our schools if we're trying to fix it on the backside. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. I think the more vocal we are about it, the more we're saying we're inspecting what we expect, the more confidence they have in us as leadership of this system, and the more confidence they have in us, and they know the confidence that we have in our superintendent and our staff, I think it just builds that community effort. So that's all I'm saying. I'm not here attacking any one situation, any one circumstances. I know there's, I'm just saying, we have issues, we know we have issues. What can we do to help fix them to make this the best school system? Because it's getting ready to become highly competitive with some of the stuff the state's doing, and we're going to have charter schools moving in, and parents are going to have options, and parents are already opting, and, you know, I want this to be the best thing. I didn't serve so that we could be third best.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howell. Any other comments? All right. Thank everyone for their input on that, and we'll look forward to further healthy discussion between this board and Mr. Booker and his staff. I would like to move on to the next item, which is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I would like to recognize Mr. Hagan.
Good evening, Chairman Lutz, Vice Chairman Ramsey, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker. It is a pleasure to present to you the Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and schools across our state and nation are celebrating teachers and thanking them for the incredible job they do each day. At this time, I would like to read the proclamation, and you do have a copy there with you. Whereas education is a grand and powerful profession that is worthy of honor and praise, and whereas excellence in education begins in the classroom, and teachers are the people responsible for shaping our future by inspiring children with challenging lessons and thought-provoking activities. And whereas teachers are a dynamic force in the learning process and demonstrate through their sense of purpose and dedication that they are a major source of inspiration for students. And whereas the teachers in Gaston County schools consistently document their professional competence and commitment to students through their willingness to give unselfishly of their time, energy, talents, and resources to help children. And whereas teachers are also role models, mentors, motivators, listeners, encouragers, caregivers, and coaches who significantly impact the lives of children every day. And whereas teachers deserve the utmost respect and adulation for their many contributions they make to our community and for their hard work and efforts to influence the leaders of tomorrow. Now therefore, in honor of all Gaston County teachers who serve their students, schools, and communities, and deserve recognition for their selfless dedication to the future of children, the Gaston County Board of Education proclaims the week of May 2nd through 6th, 2016, Teacher Appreciation Week in Gaston County schools, and encourages students, parents, school employees, and others to express their appreciation for our teachers. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minutes of the Gaston County Board of Education. This proclamation is being presented to you this evening, and it will appear on the consent agenda at the May 16th meeting. The proclamation will be posted to our website, and a copy will be sent to each school for display in the main office. It is a tradition for Gaston County schools to hold its annual Evening of Excellence ceremony during Teacher Appreciation Week. During the ceremony tomorrow night, Gaston County schools will recognize outstanding educators and present its most prestigious honors, the Teacher, Principal, Assistant Principal, and Central Office Administrator of the Year awards. To celebrate the five finalists for Gaston County Teacher of the Year, we published a series of articles that are on our website and appeared last week on the Spotlight page in the Gazette to bring attention to the quality teaching and learning taking place every day in our classrooms. In addition to the articles, we produced a short video that we would like to share at this time.
My name is Beth Crosby, and I'm a teacher at the Council of the United States. The reason I'm a teacher today is because there's, without teaching, there would be no one profession in the world. There aren't any other jobs that I can think of where I get to be a teacher, social worker, doctor, a mom, friend. My goal is for them to come out confident in themselves and understanding that they have to really be a lifelong learner.
My name is Leanne Hook, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Rankin Elementary. The reason I teach is because I love kids, and I believe in kids, and I think kids need excitement and enthusiasm and theater and music and creativity, and all of that should be infused in everybody's culture. My goal in teaching is to inspire my kids to be creative, lifelong, passionate people and learners.
My name is Cole Harrison. I teach music at Island School of Technology. I teach because I want to walk in and see kids learn how to become musicians. Not just how to play a piece of music, but how to take that piece, how to apply themselves, their emotions, everything that they bring to the table, and how to make something out of that, make something beautiful that other people can experience.
Hi, my name is Shelley Gibson, and I teach math on at Ashford High School. I teach because I want to change lives, and I change the lives of my kids by helping them see that they can be successful in a subject area such as math. It feels good to make an impact in their lives. It really does. I know I'm doing what I'm supposed to do.
I'm Leigh Davis, I'm a teacher here at Sharon Elementary. I teach because I want to inspire my students today for their futures tomorrow. I want them to know that whatever their heart desires, that they can, they can achieve.
Very good. Okay, and then you guys.
And I want to equip them with everything that I can to be successful in their life.
Very good.
I think that video shows that we have great teaching and learning taking place in our schools every day. And as we look forward to tomorrow night and seeing which one of our five finalists for Gaston County Teacher of the Year succeeds Bobby Kafnar as our Teacher of the Year, and hopefully that person will follow in his footsteps as the state Teacher of the Year. And at this time, I believe Mr. Booker has a few comments he would like to share.
Thanks, Todd. I hope you all pause and just breathe that air. That was really high air that was just presented to you. Tom Nansetti, wherever you are, thanks for your work in filming all of that. I was in several schools today, and I want to say thank you to our community, because our community has already started appreciating our teachers this week. I saw break rooms with food, I saw stickers and just little notes to our teachers. This is a big week, and so it's important that we take time to acknowledge all that our teachers are doing and the commitment that they show. We've got great teachers, and I just feel lucky to be around them, because go by a school at 4:30, the parking lot's not empty. Those folks are still there doing that extra work. Get that email at 10:30 from a teacher that says, "I had this idea, what do you think?" They are engaged all the time. And I know, I have a child that has gotten very fortunate to apply to six universities, be accepted at six universities, and that's because people have invested in him the last four years. And to watch how they unselfishly just give their time, talents, and a lot of them give their personal resources. You know, when you talk about Classroom Central in Charlotte, we're one of their largest takers of all the benefit of these businesses given, because our teachers seek out resources, and they do great things with that. Todd mentioned about creativity and just the way they celebrate the diversity of our district. It's such a pleasure to watch that go on. So I don't think we can say thank you enough. We worked on a little message that some of the principals are sharing where we sent out, just saying, "We appreciate you, and we thank you for what you do." So, folks, we may not get it right every day, but I know one thing, there are teachers at 55 schools that show up to help our children learn, grow, and just really thrive. And so I'm just appreciative, and I thank you all for taking the time to listen to this.
Yes, Mr. Dedman?
I was just wondering, Mr. Howell and I were talking about it, why do we have to wait and put this on the agenda? This is such a big month. Why can't we, we're all here tonight, there's the proclamation. Why don't we show our teachers that we'd like to do that now?
Procedurally, we typically, we bring something to you for consideration. You are more than welcome to approve and adopt at this time.
I'd like to make a motion that we, oh, I'm sorry?
Ms. Guthrie, I was getting ready to recognize you next.
Before you make the motion, let's do the other little thing, please. Is that all right, Chairman?
Cast him.
Mr. Chair and Board, in January, the board celebrated National School Board Month, and our awesome teachers and wonderful children came before us to present frames of their classrooms, and they were so excited about that. They were excited because they were helping celebrate National School Board Month. We want our teachers, we want those awesome students out there to know how much we appreciate that. And tonight, we get to reciprocate, because I would like to share with you a few words as we pay tribute to our teachers. Yes, this morning, as a teacher, I did get a free breakfast. I got popcorn as well, and children know that I love books, so they wrote little books for me. And also, I got a few mugs, as if I needed another mug, but I greatly appreciate their thoughtfulness. A teacher's influence lasts forever. In the words of William Butler Yeats... In the words of William Butler Yeats, "Education is not the filling of a pail, but the lighting of a fire." We must credit our teachers who ignite the fire of learning in the mind that is yearning for knowledge. Someone once said, "Teachers don't impact for a year, but for a lifetime." A teacher can make a lasting impression on your mind. This influence persists beyond school, college, and university and becomes the beacon of light guiding us through the journey of life. Good teachers play the role of a parent, providing encouragement, inspiration, and valuable, invaluable guidance. Teachers, we greatly appreciate you and there are words to follow.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. I'd like to read a poem. It's called "The Teacher Poem." It's by the Learning Station. I would have liked to have written this, but I just don't think I could write this. It's so good. Every day you greet your students with a smile on your face. Though paperwork the night before seems like a grueling race, money's not your motivation, it's the love for what you do. You hear this special calling to which you always will stay true. Your students are your dedication, devotion is to them. To you each child, unique and special, a beautiful little gem. Some days are just demanding and frustration takes its course. Then you see those little faces, their inspiration is your force. Each day you're in your classroom reminds you why you're there, making differences in children's lives with whom your heart you share. And there's a special pride in teachers and a love for what you do and appreciation always shared between those little lives and you. Thank you, teachers, for all you do for our students of Gaston County. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Dedman. Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. We appreciate that. And I think from this entire board, I think we see them, we see our teachers every day and we don't say thank you enough, but we do thank each and every one of our teachers out there. It's our greatest asset and we all know you're doing a great job every day. And from the board, thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Dedman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we put into, place our proclamation for Teacher Appreciation, Teacher Appreciation Week.
I'll second that.
All right, I've got a motion by Mr. Dedman and a second from Mr. Collier. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Higgin. Our next item on the agenda is Title I application. I would like to recognize Dr. Boltknight.
Good evening, members of the board, Chairman Lutes, Superintendent Booker. We do actually have four title plans that we need to share with you. I'll start with Title I. I have with me Risa Hoyle, our Executive Director, and she will actually speak to you about several others. I would like to highlight that these plans are required to be approved before we can actually complete the application, and this brings approximately $13 million to our district. So this is very important for us as we move forward with the different programs. I would like to share with you first information about Title I. We do bring this item to you each year. At this board meeting, it'll be information, and our next board meeting, it will be a request for action. The Title I plan is a grant proposal to support Gaston County School Strategic Plan and also to improve the academic achievement of our impoverished students in schools. Currently, we serve 11,819 students through Title I services within our district. And I've listed for you the poverty thresholds that would qualify our school to be Title I, 60% for elementary, 70% for middle. We currently have 25 schools with the recommendation to add a school to that list. So we have 24 and we would then add one. And my request is to add beam intermediate. Currently, Cherrville Elementary is already Title I, so the feeder elementary school, fourth and fifth grade, would be my recommendation to add. They do meet the poverty threshold and we're recommending to you, and it will be for action next week, to add that school to our list of Title I schools for this district. We currently use our funds to provide 24 instructional facilitators to our Title I schools, 20 literacy teachers, which we've talked about a lot. In fact, we'll share some additional information with you about literacy teachers over the next couple of board sessions. We have four middle school math support teachers, and then of course, our funding will be allocated for materials and technology as well to schools. Individual schools are allowed to complete a Title I plan and they can make requests for additional positions as they see fit for their school and then for materials as well as technology. Here I have listed some of the projected activities and priorities for our schools in the upcoming school year. We will continue to support K-8 literacy. We believe that it's important to have that vertical articulation from fifth grade to sixth grade, as we know that that's where we see our dip in student achievement. So we have that listed, if you'll note, in literacy and math, K-8 and not K-5. And of course, professional development that will occur at each building level to focus on the specific needs of that school, community, and those teachers. Any questions about our first plan, Title I? Yes, ma'am?
Who trains our instructional facilitators?
Great question. Actually, this year, we brought in a national expert to do some reviewing of skills to make sure that our instructional facilitators have those great coaching skills, because it's a tricky job to be in. You're a lead teacher, but you also need to have the ability to not be their evaluator, but have that comfort level with those teachers that you can go in the classroom and co-teach with them, give them feedback so they can adjust their teaching. And so we've done some intensive work with them this year and that's been well received by our schools and our instructional facilitators.
So what time of the year do they get that coaching done?
They've already had four sessions of it. They'll have the last two sessions this summer and then they'll be ready with those new skills in the fall. We do that about every three years, just to review from a national perspective, what are the new trends in coaching? How do you engage and work with teachers? But they also meet with a Title I person from the district level every other month to make sure that we're being consistent across the Title I schools of the services we're offering to the teachers.
Okay, so if we do that every three years, what about new ones that are brought in? Do they go through that same process immediately?
As we bring new ones in, then we do some additional training, almost like tips for new teachers. It's tips for new instructional facilitators to explain what their role is, to define it, and then they also go and they work with other instructional facilitators to make sure that they have the support they need, that they may not feel comfortable asking someone like me, "I'm struggling with this with my teachers. They're not coming on board with some of the things that I'm trying to share with them." And so we go and bring that actual expert instructional facilitator to go work with them.
Okay, what about our, who trains the literacy teachers?
We have a person that works with the literacy teachers from the district level. They also participate in all of our literacy training across the district.
Okay, thank you.
And they're classroom teachers, so that's, they work with students and pull them out, so they definitely work and participate in all of our training for teachers. Mr. Howe?
Dr. Boltknight, can you give the dollar amount again for this past year and what the application is?
The application will be for $9 million for Title I.
What was the dispatch?
It's around the same number, $9 million.
Is there a formula for that, for the government?
Well, it's based on our number of children that meet the poverty rate, so that's how we get our number. There is possibility that the dollar figure could be more, but that's still depending on what happens at the federal and state level. So that's why I said it's $9 million is what we're anticipating, because that's what we received last year. But as we get the official information after we submit our initial plan, then I'll be able to come back to you to give you the exact dollar amount. Mr. Attorney?
Well, I know it's been immediate, first off, and yes, the elementary did, and so you figure that they would go on, but sometimes you have to identify those
Yes, sir.
children out there that are friggin' reduced.
Yes.
Once you're in the Title I, you become Title I. How long, because we've had schools before that border on the 60%?
Yes, sir. If your friggin' reduced lunch numbers decline, then you're no longer eligible, but there's a year that you stay in, so there's a transition year, so it wouldn't immediately happen to that school. So there's a transition year to make that bridge for the school to lose those funds.
And instructional facilitators, then they would be eligible for?
Yes, sir. They would be eligible based on the number of students. Some schools have a full-time instructional facilitator and some will have part-time.
Based on?
Their enrollment numbers, yes, sir. Because as we bring more on, we want to make sure that we continue to provide resources consistently across the Title I schools.
Now, Dr. Boltknight, all this is above and beyond what we put into the schools, is that not correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
So everybody knows that, that whereas, in other words, a regular Title I school still has the same number of teachers from the state like everybody else.
Yes, sir.
This is just an added benefit to hopefully bring them up to grade level.
Just to provide a level playing field for those students, yes, sir.
What's our, our percentage, is it still 70%?
It's 70% for middle school and 60% for elementary. I'll invite Ms. Hoole to come up and she's going to speak with you about our Title II. Title III, NAIG.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be able to share updates with you for Title II that we know as Title II Part A for Improving Teacher Quality. It's one of the main focuses of this particular fund and we also look at teacher recruitment and retention, how we can support those efforts, as well as professional development with the use of Title II grant. We provide support for all of our schools through our curriculum facilitators, instructional technology facilitators, also human resource support, and again, professional development. Do we have any questions about these funds? That is a million one.
One in a million?
One. One point one. Yes, ma'am?
I'll ask the same question for our curriculum facilitators. What about their training? Do you like to handle their training?
Sure. One of the things that we do with our curriculum facilitators, we'd like for them to be, of course, they review and they preview materials before we decide to bring a program to the district and before we share it with our teachers. But once the program is here, then we require that they become the experts, so they sit in the trainings with the teachers. And then as new teachers come into the district after the first year, then we pay the experts to come into the district, then they become the trainers for those teachers. But a day in the life of a curriculum facilitator is they're in classrooms, they're meeting with principals, providing suggestions for teachers that are struggling for a teacher that wants to accelerate or enrich students. They spend the majority of their time in schools with teachers one-on-one, and in the summer, they update and refresh our pacing guides.
So when you say you want them to become the experts, when they're becoming the experts, are they teaching themselves just by investigation or?
Well, they have groups that they meet with across the region. So for example, we have a curriculum facilitator for middle school math. So he has worked with our large 10 districts across the state and they've shared documents, they've come together for training. And in fact, he's offered a new training to our middle school teachers just this week with some new resources that have come from that training. So they're constantly meeting with their colleagues around the state to get the updates. And then we oftentimes are able to send them to state conferences to get some additional training and then companies come in and work with us to train them as well.
One more follow-up question, by the way. You said, you said, that one of the pieces of that was recruitment and retention of quality teachers. What is the percentage of the one in a million that's for recruitment and retention? And how is that used, how is that 1.1 they use to recruit or retain?
We use it, Mr. Howe, we have recruiting trips that we send folks on. We also go to job fairs. We had our own job fair, so that's where a substantial part of it goes. Any of the development, like since Dr. Maddox has been here, we've entered into two partnerships with higher education to try and recruit and use teachers for, let them do their student teaching with us, so they get acquainted with us and we have the first shot at hiring those students. And that number bounces of the 1.1, it's somewhere usually between $100,000 and $200,000. A lot of that will depend on the year and what we're doing. And during the Great Recession, we cut back considerably on our recruitment. And then one of the things that we shared with the board two months ago is we're using a lot more virtual and online, so the expenditure for travel has declined, but we still participate in those, we're able to bring our principals in. And Dr. Maddox, refresh me, how many folks did you see at the last one?
We had over 6,000 teachers.
Yeah, so by doing the virtual, it expands and we're able to put our things out there. One of the folks, Ms. Roberts, you didn't ask about our instructional technology facilitators. They helped develop a video that is shown as part of that program, so it's a really team effort in recruiting because getting teachers is, you know, number one job for all of us in this district right now is to make sure we have highly qualified folks.
So follow-up question, 10 to 20% is used roughly? Nine to 18, I remember.
Yeah.
Can that money be used or does the system, do we already provide some type of incentive for teachers that maybe want to finish that last three classes for their masters or gives them an incentive for a national board certification that helps retain? Because we're not quality teachers and normally the teachers that want to go to that next level are your quality teachers, not that, those that aren't, I don't want some teacher calling me with a bachelor's degree and slamming me because I don't have my masters either. But is, is that, can those funds be used for that? Do we have another source for that or do we even offer that?
We support teachers as they pursue national boards, but financial support is something was a district we haven't had the luxury of doing. And these funds are targeted more to the recruitment and retention.
Wouldn't that be a huge recruitment piece though, if you said, hey, if you want to come work for us? And is this off-camera?
Well, no, it's a great question and it's one that we would love to be able to do. We, as you all have done in your budget requests for the last three years, we still believe we need to pay all of our teachers. And until we get that number more in line, it's hard to say we're going to go out with any special incentives. You're competing for the same dollar.
If these funds are just for that, are they?
These funds are allowed to do a number of things, as you say, employ folks.
We couldn't say we're going to retain you by taking part of our one in a million and giving you a supplement. We'd have to use it for recruitment, retention, or those other things we talked about.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to Title III and what we know is ESL. This particular grant provides support through the strategic plan and also to increase the language proficiency and academic achievement of our English language learners. In our district, our current enrollment is 1,459. Those are the number of students we serve that are limited English proficient at this time. We have 82 newcomers across the district and 30 that are served through our Newcomers Center. There are 35 different languages that we, that are represented in our district at this time. Most of our LEP students are served through pull-out classes, but we do have some 90-minute classes in the high school. At this time, we employ 30 ESL teachers and they serve all K-12 students. We have one interpreter translator, one Title III lead ESL teacher, one Title III parent liaison, one Title III sheltered instruction observation protocol coach. She provides differentiation for English learners. And then also additional funding for professional development of these teachers. Our projected priorities for this coming school year include increasing the educator and administrator knowledge on the needs of our English language learners, also the knowledge about the ACCESS 2.0 test. You know, every year we provide, we have to administer a test according to the state for our students, and this year it all went online, so that brought all kinds of new information for us, scores and also the data that it provides in order to drive our instruction. And then to increase professional development opportunities for teachers and principals in the district. Do I have a question about Title III? Yes, sir?
178,000?
Yes, sir.
And this is just, maybe this is a general question about ESL, not so much the grant, if I can.
Sure.
Give me a little bit of attitude. How much do we work, because what I found, just my limited, is that the kids tend to kind of do well with learning English. It's the parents where the communication gap is. When we send homework, home assignment in English and we say, "Okay, fix that," you know, to help your kid, and they're like, "Hmm." Does any of that money, that Title III money, does it help with trying to get the parents up to speed, understand what we're doing? Or is it just helping in sending homework assignments home in whatever the 35 languages, Bulgarian, so that they can read it to their student?
Yes, it does provide. And we actually are doing a lot of neat things, I think, in the district. We have two bilingual parent specialists that serve two of our elementary schools that have our largest population of ESL students. that have our largest population of ESL students and they're doing some really neat things with families and that's through a joint collaboration effort with Title I. And they work to provide opportunities for parent workshops that they're doing a lot of, this is what your child's homework looks like and this is what we're looking for and let us help you. So it's building capacity there so that they can help us help their children. Also, the ESL teachers across the district offer that kind of support for parents. A lot of our ESL teachers can serve as interpreters and they have that able, that ability to be able to help the parents as well with homework. And then, of course, our interpreter and our parent liaison at the International Center are available to parents. We give that number out to everybody. That is their purpose, is to be able to provide whatever support is needed. Yes, sir.
To be determined. Okay.
That was the same one I've been asking. What is our, what do we do for our ESL teachers as in training?
We, our ESL lead teacher and I go to training every year at the state level that we receive all the updates about what's going on in ESL in the year, then what changes we've had. And then our teachers attend all sorts of ESL trainings. They're very ambitious and want to go and want to improve their craft and their skill and they ask. And so we send as many as we can send with the funds that we have available. And I think we've done a really good job recently with that. And they have ESL symposiums that are put on by DPI, by the State Department. They go to things such as that. They go to trainings. We've had some approval to go to trainings outside of the state and then they are very good about coming back and sharing with their colleagues what they've learned in a, in a very comprehensive manner so that everybody benefits from that training. Okay, we'll move on to the AIG plan. And this plan is a little different. It isn't a federal fund. We know that that's state funds and we write this plan every three years. So this is our rewrite year. And it also supports the Gaston County School Strategic Plan. It's written every three years. It's the gifted program's responsibility to recognize, challenge, and nurture students with exceptional academic and intellectual potential and then to provide personalized and differentiated instruction to help those students succeed. Our head count as of this past Friday was 3,178 and we submit that head count in April at the end of the month every year. And this year, we have 611 composure students and we know those are at our Title I schools, second through fifth grade students. Elementary AIG students are served through a pull-out model. They get 90 minutes of service delivery a week. Most schools, most teachers provide two 45-minute sessions, but sometimes scheduling doesn't allow and we have one 90-minute. Middle school students are served through advanced language arts and advanced math classes. And then our high school students receive services through AP courses and honors courses. We have 15 AIG elementary teachers that serve our K-5 students and you know, those are split across the county. Some serve multiple schools, some just one. Then we have three AIG support teachers that support our middle school teachers with a variety of things, with their compacted curriculums, with their gifted curriculum, also with what do we do with child, with children who are just overachieving in a particular area or even the child that might be struggling in a particular area. We offer professional development and resource support for AP and honors course teachers and a lot of that's done through College Board and at the state level as well. And this year, we're going to have two summer camps that we've talked about. Some of you have heard lots of details about from the AIG program. We're going to have the Summer Enrichment Institute, which will be held at Cramerton Middle School for our rising sixth through eighth graders. They'll have an opportunity to choose, the children can choose from one of five different classes ranging from Minecraft to band to the great outdoors with a, with a true park ranger that will be hosting that. And then the second opportunity is for our high school juniors and seniors, everything you want to know to get into college and earn scholarships. That particular summer opportunity will allow students to practice or have some research and, I don't know, study skills for ACT, SAT, and also creating their high school resume and work to be able to complete good college and scholarship essays. Our projected priorities, to continue to analyze and monitor student performance growth and dropout data for gifted students. Also, increase the AP course offerings, participation and performance is always for most of our goals. And then offer more professional development opportunities for everybody, not just our AIG teachers, but our classroom teachers that serve our students the majority of the week. Do you have any questions about AIG plan? Yes, sir.
How much? No, I'm just kidding. I asked this question, I think, maybe last year, year before last, as it concerns the high school level.
Yes.
So the AP courses in specific. This year, we offered free AP testing for those students to take advantage of. So we probably don't have the answers to all my questions, but I would like to see some follow-up data on this, see if Ms. Guthrie's committee could follow up or maybe at a board meeting. Is how many people enroll, were enrolled, how many students were enrolled in AP courses throughout the county this year? How many students took the AP test that correlated with the class that they took? And then how many students passed that test? Because I know in the years past, there's, there's either been a disconnect of students that wanted to take the test, so wanted to take the class unless they just wanted to hire GPA. And there's also been a little bit of disconnect between the students that took the class, took the test, that actually passed it. And so I know for today, my daughter took the AP psych test. She holds a 90 for average AP psych, which tells me as a parent, she should do really well in the AP exam. I don't know if that's, we'll see. But I want to see, I'd like to see some of that data to see, are we preparing our kids for the AP test, which is the main goal, I would hope, for kids to take AP classes, not only to learn and retain the knowledge, but to be able to pass the test and it benefit their future. So I'd like to know kind of, how many were enrolled, how many took the test and then how many actually passed the test? And based on those numbers, the ones that didn't pass, is there a trend there? Does that make sense?
It does. And I have a little bit of that information already. We know that we have about 3,100 students who have taken an AP course this year. And you know, that's a duplicate count because one child could take three or four classes. And then we have 1,750 exams in that neighborhood that have already been ordered for this particular year. And of course, we won't know how they do until later. We also held an AP review session on Saturday in April for our students and offered practically every AP course that they would have an opportunity to take. And we feel like that's very beneficial because a lot of these courses are taken in the fall semester and then they don't test until May. So that gives them an opportunity to do some refresher time. We also had teachers who chose to open their after-school review sessions open to other students at other counties and that, not other counties, sorry, other schools that would come to a particular school based on if they had, if they could, if they could make it work into a schedule. So the children had some multiple opportunities to do some review sessions. So we'll do that. We'll work with that data and find an opportunity to be able to share it back with you when we have it.
I have a question on the review. When was the review? Because I remember seeing it. I remember seeing that it was the Saturday in April. How far in advance was it posted? Because I know we have some parents that they micromanage their calendar and it's laid out six months ahead of time.
Sure.
Do you know how soon we put that? And is there a way, and I don't know, to maybe?
Pick it early?
Not just that, but maybe offer an alternate? Because if Cousin Sally is getting married and she planned it a year ago and that's the day it falls on, we're asking our kids to make a tremendous sacrifice, which?
Sure.
Sometimes life's about sacrifices, but is there a way to, to do that in the future that maybe?
I would absolutely imagine that there is a way to do that. One of the things that we work hard about with that, we chose April 19th, that Saturday this year. You want to get it prior enough to the actual exams that they can use whatever it is they get and prepare for the exam. So we want to back up far enough there. But the other thing that we run into at this time of the year are proms. I know, we, we're not, we want to make sure we come to the AP review, but proms do make a, because it's an all-day event. 163 participated and we had three different sessions.
We did, it was publicized in the paper. We did a board meeting, two board meetings in a row was talked about and it was, I mean, it was plenty out there.
No, I'm not saying that. I just?
I understand.
Maybe if we could, and I don't know what the cost of offering a second AP review is, but I would love to know from AP students, you know, if we could survey, even just the ones this semester, if we could get some kind of quick survey and say, did you do the review? Why or why not?
Well, we only had 100 and something out of 3,000.
No, that's what I'm saying. So I'd like to know what the, why the reason, it wasn't important, my teacher's the rock star or the day just didn't work. I don't know, I'm just curious.
Mr. Howe, if I may say that making sure that there's a follow-through from the beginning of a child taking the AP course to taking the exam and doing well on it, that is a priority for us. Ms. Hall and I have talked about that extensively. In fact, we're in the process of reviewing online programs. So to your point, if someone wants to utilize an online program at home or if they are on their way to the beach and they still want to participate and they also can use that throughout the school year. So we are well aware and making it a priority because we agree with you. The numbers just don't match. The 3,100 in the course and then 160 coming on Saturday, we know that we're not meeting our needs. So we're definitely working to change that for next year.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much, Dr. Ballnick. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11, paragraph A6 for personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Chair, you have second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? All right, we're going into closed session.